Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening and welcome to Carnegie Town Hall. I call this meeting of the Sioux Falls Planning Commission to order. I would like to emphasize a couple of items before we begin tonight. Out of courtesy for everyone, please silence all electronic devices at this time. We look forward to hearing your testimony tonight, and we appreciate all of you joining us. In an effort to have sufficient time to hear from all audience members, we ask that when you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Also, please limit your comments to five minutes or less to allow us to hear from everyone who would like to speak tonight. At this time, we will consider the consent agenda. Tamara, please read the items on the consent agenda.
Item one, approval of minutes. Item two A, petition REZ 015381 2021, rezoning from the MH Manufactured Housing District to the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District located at 2508 2809 North Bent Grass Court. Item two B, petition rezone 015392 2021, rezoning from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District located at 3,000 West Aligar Place. Item two C, petition rezone 015400 2021, rezoning from the S1 General Institutional District and RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban Districts to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District located at 5055 East Grant Street. Item two D, petition rezone 015439 2021, rezoning from the RD2 Residential Suburban Townhome District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban and RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District located at 5,100 East 69th Street. Item two E, petition rezone 015446 2021, rezoning from the RD2 Residential Suburban Townhome District to the RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density District located at 6301 East 33rd Street. Item two F, petition rezone 015507 2021, rezoning from the C3 Commercial Community District to the RA3 Apartment Residential High Density District located at 3801 South Elmwood Avenue. Item two G, petition CU 015495 2021, conditional use permit for on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment within 500 feet from a sensitive land use located at 8509 West 26th Street. Item two H, petition CU 015430 2021, conditional use permit for off-sale alcoholic beverage establishment within 500 feet of a sensitive land use located at 2013 South Minnesota Avenue. Item two I, petition CU 15511 2021, conditional use permit for on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment within 500 feet from a sensitive land use located at 301 South Garfield Avenue. Item two J, petition PUD 015500 2021, initial development plan amendment for the Lake Lorraine PUD located at the southeast corner of South Marion Road and West Lake Shore Boulevard. And item three, consent agenda approval.
Thank you, Tamara. Members of the audience, at this time, I'm going to ask for the commissioners to approve of the regu- of the consent agenda items. But before I do, I want to ask you, is there anybody here tonight that would like to have discussion on any of those consent agenda items? If so, please come forward at this time, and we'll go through the regular process of discussing those. So please let us know at this time if there's one of those items you'd like to discuss. Seeing none, we will close the floor on those, and I will look for an approval of the consent agenda items.
Mr. Chair, move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion on any of the consent agenda items tonight? Seeing none, we'll take a vote on the consent agenda items. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed say no. Consent agenda items have passed six to zero. If you were here for any of the consent agenda items, thank you for coming tonight. You're free to leave. At the next item, we'll move on to the regular agenda. Can I get a motion to approve of the regular agenda?
Mr. Chair, motion approve. The regular agenda.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote on the form of the regular agenda. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed say no. The regular agenda has passed six to zero. Denise, please, oh, sorry, Tamara, please read the first item on the regular agenda.
That was a compliment, so thank you. Five A is petition rezone 015482 2021, rezoning from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RA3 Apartment Residential High Density and CN Conservation Districts located at 2201 West Old Yankton Circle.
Hi, Adam.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Adam Roach with Planning Development Services. As indicated at the planning briefing on Tuesday, we had a neighborhood meeting last night for the Old Yankton Trail Circle. Based on comments and feedback from that meeting, the applicant has decided to defer the application so we can work out some things.
Thank you, Adam. Do we know if the applicant's here?
I do not believe the applicant is here.
Very good. We'll still open the floor to public input on this item. Anybody here that would like to speak on this item five A tonight, please come forward at this time. Seeing none, I'll look for a motion, commissioners, and the next meeting will be held on January 5th.
Next meeting? Is it the next meeting, or, okay?
January 5th.
Next, yeah.
Very good.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to defer item five A until the January 5th meeting.
Second.
A motion and a second to defer. Commissioners, any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to defer signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed say no. That item has passed for deferral, six to zero. Tamara, please read the next item.
Item five B is petition rezone 015493 2021, rezoning from the C3 Commercial Community District to the I1 Light Industrial District located at 3901 West 59th Street.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Jason Bieber with Planning and Development Services. This is an application by Alan Jensen with Raven Industries. It's a request to rezone from the C3 to the I1 Light Industrial District. The address is 3901 West 59th Place, or Street, excuse me, just west of Louise and north of 229. The purpose of this rezone is Raven is looking to allow some light manufacturing in this existing building. The building will also house offices for some of the company engineers. They have indicated that there will be no, zero outdoor storage with this specific use of the building. The site is located within a business park, as we see in that area with the future land use map of Shaped Places in the 2040. There's various light industrial, commercial, office, and apartment uses. We did have some concerns from some neighbors within emails, and I believe we printed out a one that we just received today. Most of those concerns were having to do with heavy truck traffic on this section of 59th Street and really incompatibility with the existing commercial uses. As we do know, staff's opinion on this is it does meet the specific criteria of the comprehensive plan. If we look at this area, north of I229, east of 29, west of Louise, as I indicated before, there's a lot of light industrial, commercial, office, and apartment uses. Those are all pretty much allowed in the I1 zoning district. And to give you just a little bit more history, prior to Shaped Places adoption in 2014, this was actually part of the West 57th Street Plan Development District. And you look at it, it's sub, Sub Area C, I kind of highlighted the red star is where this property is located. It was part of Sub Area C, which did allow office. It allowed retail, it allows warehouse, it allows even that light manufacturing, provided that all that outdoor storage is screened and all the manufacturing takes, takes place indoors. So the uses Raven is proposing has been allowed there since 1994 on this specific parcel. And then as part of Shaped Places, obviously, we went away from PDs, and the underlying zoning on this was C4, so we just converted it to C4. But it was allowed light manufacturing. So staff does feel that this is consistent with the Shaped Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan, and it's consistent with this specific area of the city, and since it's been utilized with those type of uses since 1994, so.
Very good. Thank you, Jason. Commissioners, any questions for Jason on this item? Can we get the applicant up here to speak to this item?
Good evening. I'm Tim Onis. I'm the Corporate Facilities Manager for Raven. So Alan Jensen is one of my employees that submitted the form, so.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant tonight? None at this time. We may pull you back up, though. Thank you. At this time, we'll open up the floor to public input on this item. Anybody who is here from the public that would like to speak on this item, please come forward at this time, state your name for the record. Yep, come on up.
Hello? I guess I'll be first. I'm Dave Edwards. I'm with Haggen Wilken Archer Law Firm here in Sioux Falls. And we represent Dakota Spirit LLC. That's a cheerleading, cheer facility in that same neighborhood. And John and Robin Fritsch are the owners. And they contacted me regarding the concerns, having a manufacturing facility nearby. And I do share those concerns with them, and they've also spoken with some neighboring businesses already. And I think there is some, some ground swell, so to speak, with regard to objecting to this rezoning. And the, the points, the, the, the commission has already mentioned, kind of passed over those, those points pretty quickly. Number one, it's really not true that manufacturing has been approved in this area. It is clearly a defined area that has the, the hotel and the business use in there. There is no manufacturing nearby. There is one lot southwest, which is a lower level, kind of a rectangular lot, which is a bare lot, but that's quite a ways away. And that's not under development, and certainly hasn't been a part of this business community at all in this area. So, one, manufacturing is not compatible with this area. When my clients had built that building that they're in, they went through a great deal of planning and objections with regard to the building that they built. And they ended up having to build a very nice-looking, you know, facade and stonework on the outside, which was not part of the original plan. And it was because of the I20, I229 corridor was being told to them as something very important and very precious. And you couldn't change the identity of the I229 corridor, and that all buildings should be a particular type and function. And so, you know, that, that process that they went through was very intensive. And then to have a manufacturing all of a sudden come in for a spot zoning application is really creating some discussions, for sure, among these business owners. The surrounding businesses, as you know, are retail and restaurants and hotels and offices. The infrastructure, the streets, were not built for heavy-duty trucks. Now, the petitioner possibly could, could come up and explain what's being manufactured. But it really doesn't matter, because Raven, or whomever the owner could be, they can sell it. The next owner would have the opportunity to manufacture anything it wanted to within the light industrial definition. And that requires raw materials being trucked in with heavy-duty trucks, finished goods being trucked out. And although the petitioners have said there is no outside storage, we really know how the world works. There's always outside storage. Raven may be a great neighbor. The next one may be terrible. They might have as much outside storage as they could possibly do and cause issues there. There's definitely supply chain issues. There's lack of warehousing. There's no warehouse in this area. And so even if they were to store goods elsewhere, that just increases the amount of trucks that would have to come back and forth to this facility. Those heavy-duty trucks are going to be passing through car dealerships, McDonald's, hair salons, pizza shops, yogurt shops, and other similar businesses in that area. And as, being a resident of Sioux Falls for nearly 30 years, it's just really not a compatible thing that you see around our city. And if you've visited other cities, you see why. It's a, that's how planning should be done. You should not have, for example, if you go through Brandon, not to pick on Brandon, but as you drive through the, drive to the baseball park from the Casey's, it's like, well, there's a nursing home and there's a lumberyard. And it just doesn't seem to make sense. And I think that's what the petitioner is intending to have happen here. And I think that's what Sioux Falls has been avoiding purposefully and intentionally for as long as I can remember. And that's why you folks have the jobs that you do. The other uses in this area are businesses that operate during regular business hours.
And Dave, Dave, sorry to interrupt. We're at five minutes. I'll give you just a few seconds to wrap up here.
Thank you, Eric. The regular business hours is also a concern. Everyone else in this neighborhood are your eight-to-five-type businesses, except maybe the restaurants that stay open until 10 o'clock sometimes. We don't know what the hours are for this light manufacturing, and we don't know what the hours would be for any subsequent owner of this property. Zoning is a permanent thing. I think I've mentioned that enough, that it is very easy for a second buyer to come in and take advantage of this spot zoning in this neighborhood. We do have other industrial parks in the city. As you know, the big one on, on the north side by I-90, it's got rail. This city has adequate industrial parks for this type of facility.
And then, thank you, Dave. We do need to keep it to the time limit, but thank you. Appreciate it. Any other members from the public here tonight that would like to address this item? Yep, please come forward. State your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Arthur Crenns, 200 East 36th Street in Sioux Falls. I represent the 57th Street Properties, which was the, or and is, the original developer of this area. And we are opposed to this rezoning petition. We've spoken with several of the neighbors in this area, and they are also opposed. Dakota Spirit, which was able to have a representative here tonight, and others that were not. We have land on three sides of this property that would be negatively impacted. We did not, in development of this area, set it up as an industrial area. We have been selective in our buyers who we've sold to and what their uses would be. There are also covenants in place that may prohibit this usage or the addition. Our concern is the impact on the existing land users, land values, and potential buyers. I believe I heard Dave speaking about the truck traffic and the industrial options of if the land is sold to somebody else. Raven may be a good corporate citizen, and I think has been, but we just are worried about who the, the next buyer might be. This does appear to be spot zoning for the convenience of the property owner against the interests of the neighbors and neighborhood. And if you take a look at the I1 zoning district, it starts off with, it's, this district is intended to provide for a number of light manufacturing, wholesale warehousing, and service uses in an attractive industrial park-like setting. This is not an industrial park. So again, we would oppose this rezoning petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public here tonight that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the floor to public input. I will go ahead and look for Commissioner action on this item.
Did we want, want the applicant to come back up and address any of the issues?
Yeah. One of the commissioners would like the applicant to come back up. If you could maybe address some of the current concerns, maybe also tell us a little bit more about the use and operations.
Sure. So the, the majority of the facility is actually going to be our primary spot of engineering for the division that's going there. So there will be approximately 70 engineering division, you know, there'll be a lot of engineers there that'll be designing product. So that's going to be, you know, the large majority of it. At some point, if, you know, the zoning can, can work out, the light manufacturing that we do is basically the design and development of, it's like a GPS radar system that they make. It's a smaller unit. It's not like big, huge items. It's not vehicles. It's, you know, probably the size of this podium here. And so the deliveries, most of those are like your speedy trucks, your FedEx, UPS. There are semis, but typically it's where they're bringing a pallet, and that pallet gets unloaded, or, you know, something gets shipped off. There's not a lot of traffic for this group that we're looking at. Currently, where we've got our locations out in an industrial park, it's one of the ones, it just does not have outside storage. We can't really store that equipment outside. So it's mostly all small component pieces, electronics. They get stored outside, or inside on pallet racking. And, you know, so they pick and choose their pieces, so. And then also, like, the balloons that they make, it's a very clean environment and where they just seam the plastics together. And so all done inside, it's, you know, everything is, is, from the standpoint of outside storage, that I don't, you know, we won't have any issues with that. We currently don't store any of the stuff outside at all. It has to be inside. So truck traffic for us in that situation is very light, you know, comparatively. Like I said, when I went and talked to everybody today, most of the truck traffic is like your speedy trucks, UPS, FedEx, and it's, I don't know what they really call it, but more of your delivery vans. So, not saying that there wouldn't be semi-traffic, but it is not the majority of what we're using it for, so.
And then how about hours of operation?
Hours of operation, it, it depends. You know, if they've got certain jobs they have to get done during the times, there's been times where they would work weekends. And then they've had times where they will work double shifts. But currently, they basically are Monday through Thursday, and typically they're done by, I think it's 6:00 PM, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM is current. But it changes just based upon business scene. If they've got to get products out, or they have high times, then, you know, they ramp up, and they might run extra shifts.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions for the applicant tonight, commissioners?
Mr. Chair, how many people do you employ that would be at this facility?
At this facility? Well, in, in the beginning, there will be about 70, but that plan is to grow that to, up to 150.
Further questions, commissioners? None at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for Jason.
Yes, Jason, could we get you up to the podium?
Jason, could you talk about the other I1 locations in this area and how that works with, or doesn't, with what's being proposed here?
Yeah, great question. We know I1, the I1 zoning district allows a lot of uses. Really, pretty much everything that's in this area can be done in the I1 zoning district. You know, as we get the I1, we also allow other forms, like retail forms, office, hotel forms, and also the light manufacturing. So if Raven would go and move out of this, a retail use could go in here, an office use could go in here, you know, a light manufacturing, a light warehousing could go in here. So it could be a lot of different things. I1 doesn't just allow them to only do light manufacturing, light warehousing. It allows all those other uses, too. So future uses could be a hotel, just like is across the street on both sides, or a McDonald's that's on the corner that's open 24 hours a day. So those things are allowed in I1 with our new Shaped Places zoning district.
How are those other I1 locations working, in your opinion, with regards to the plan for the park out there?
The other ones that are currently zoned I1? Most of those, to be honest with you, are probably larger office buildings. I believe Citibank has owned I1. That's a large office building. But as we indicated before, the original developers of the West 50th Street properties, this is the map. This is the planned development from 1994. These are the uses that they allowed in this specific area. So 2013, you could have done this use in here without coming forward to the Planning Commission. You would just, would have had to possibly do a planned development district, so, or a final development plan, excuse me, so.
Since it came up, is it appropriate to consider no outsourced storage as a condition, or?
You could put a condition on that aspect of it. If they did do outdoor storage, we do still have the requirements of it being screened. You know, this one here said light manufacturing, provided all, or, excuse me, all outdoor storage must be screened. That was the old. So that would still be a requirement under the Shaped Sioux Falls, Shaped Places zoning ordinance that needs to be screened from, especially from 229. And there used to be the 229 Design Review District, so there might have been some other criterias on architectural elements for this building. However, as we know, by the new Shaped Places zoning ordinance, we don't have any architectural elements as part of our new ordinance, so.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Jason, if I remember right, the new gauge site, or the old gauge site is I1, if I remember right. Just because of the setbacks and all that is why they went that way.
They, they kept it I1, working with those developers. You're absolutely correct. Is really the flexibility of the I1 zoning district, because as I indicated before, you could do retail, you could do office. And then really finding that line where we're going to have retail along 12th Street, and then as you start transitioning south, that's probably going to be some more light industrial. When they didn't really have that defined line, it just gave them more flexibility. As, as we, as I like to say, the I1 zoning district under Shaped Places is one of our better zoning districts, because it allows you to do so much. And a lot of times on the I1, it's not manufacturing or warehousing. There is a lot of retail or office in the I1 zoning district.
And then one more question on covenants. That's addressed by the county, correct?
That would be addressed, the covenants and restrictions are filed by the county and enforced by the Homer's Association, or the developers out here. We wouldn't have access to those or would not enforce any of those covenants and restrictions.
And I'm not sure if you can answer this. A couple, it came up a couple times, spot zoning. Maybe the attorney can, I, I'm not 100% sure.
As part of Shaped Places, like I indicated, we don't really recognize spot zoning anymore, because the argument is white man, or I1's spot zoning, well, we can put a hotel there in I1. Is that spot zoning? There's a hotel right next to it. So with Shaped Places, as we allowed those forms, that two-layer system that we have on there, it's not spot zoning anymore, because it allows retail, office, or manufacturing. So you could do either of those, and as the attorney indicated, this is an area of retail and office uses. Well, those are allowed in I1.
So spot zoning, just to get it in my head, would be like if it was a residential area, and you put a I1 in the middle of it?
Yeah, something like that. Wouldn't, and we wouldn't support those kind of uses either.
Okay. I just want to get down what it was.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Jason, you talked about I1 light industrial, obviously. And I heard a couple of input comments from public about what if Raven were to sell this? What is the most intensive I1 use of this site should Raven sell the property? It's now zoned I1, and a factory wanted to move in there. How big could it be? Give us some of those kinds of details.
Yeah, if, a factory, if you got into a big factory where it's processing, large processing factories, those obviously wouldn't be allowed in there. Those would be bumped up to I2 if it's like seed processing, you know, animal processing. Really, anything that's large processing is going to be I2, which wouldn't be allowed. Typically, we see those real small, you know, warehousing, light manufacturing. And with Raven's plan, I mean, honestly, you could almost argue that it's an office with some accessory manufacturing in there, too, if they're... So it's just one of those difficult uses. And in theory, if they go to I1, it, it really encompasses everything for them. The office use, the little accessory light manufacturing, and everything else they're doing in there, so.
So does the I1 light industrial have implied in it that all manufacturing has to be indoors, for example? Or can it be outdoors as well, say another owner would buy the property?
Light manufacturing needs to be conducted indoors in the I, I1. They can have outdoor storage of products if it's screened. But if somebody else would come in there, you want to do manufacturing in the parking lot or something, then we would obviously not allow that, so. allow that, so.
Right. And then, I-1 also requires a set aside for a certain number of parking spaces, so it can never grow beyond what would fit on the site and have adequate parking as well, right?
Correct. We would, by the form that they're utilizing, that's how we would figure out parking. If you look at the area line, this one, it was a, a college, Colorado Tech. I'm assuming it has way more parking than they'd ever be required for any use in there.
Okay. And so, you know, I think Raven talked about up to 140 employees, so that's going to require enough parking that we'll actually use a good, significant portion of this. So, to think that the, the building could be raised and a different one built in its place that's like five times the current size, that likely won't fit the site. Is that a correct assumption?
Yeah, you would still have to meet all the setbacks and parking and, and all that different uses. And typically, it's easier to go from a office or retail use up to manufacturing or warehousing, because the parking ratio for office and commercial is a lot more. So you typically have a lot of parking. Where we run into problems with parking is if, you know, Raven built this as a light manufacturing, then they sold it to a, a college. Well, you'd probably run into parking issues, because there'd be a lot less parking required with the light manufacturing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Commissioners, further questions for Jason tonight?
Mr. Chair, Jason, this letter we received here, I don't know if you could maybe explain a little bit about that second paragraph about the reduced taxation for new industrial structures. Is that applicable?
The taxation thing, I, I don't, I don't really deal a lot with that. I, I could ask the applicant if they've applied for that, but I, but I don't really, I haven't heard them. That's why they're rezoning to I-1. We've worked with Raven, to be honest with you, quite a bit for this specific use in other areas of the city. We talked to them about possibly going into, to some commercial areas temporarily to go into some buildings. As, that's where we struggled a little bit with what their use is. Is it an office? Is it a light manufacturing? So overall, we, we thought, yeah, maybe you better try and find a building that you can kind of rezone to light industrial. So I don't think they're specifically doing that. I think they'd rather just go into this building and not go through the process of it. But that, I don't know if they've applied for that or not.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Commissioners, further questions for Jason? Seeing none at this time, I propose we get a motion on the floor. Do we have a motion, commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of this request for rezoning.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, commissioners. We've had some discussion, but let's go ahead and kick it off and have further discussion on this item.
Quick question. Who made the second? I heard two voices.
Um, Mr. Lukey.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion tonight on item 5B, commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I think since we're considering I-1 light industrial here, it does appear from the maps that we have other I-1 industrial that may be on the other side of an adjacent one, like the I-1 in the lower-left corner of the current image. Some others that are just to the north, just to the west. It doesn't appear that this is incompatible with the neighbors. Even in our normal scales of comparing incompatibility, this seems to be a fairly compatible use in what's being proposed by Raven. And after hearing how far a light industrial redevelopment of this could go, it doesn't sound like even that would be incompatible with this neighborhood. So, overall, I think it, it meets the intent that we try to do and not make really big changes within the neighborhood. And I feel like this is fairly compatible, so I'm in support of it.
Thank you, Commissioner Urban. Further discussion tonight, commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I would agree with Sean. I think we're going to see this in most corridors like this. Instead of going to a commercial, retail-type setting, I think we're going to start seeing a lot of I-1 type setups, just because of the flexibility that can be done, just like the, the old Gage site. I think it's going to be how a lot of this is going to be developed in the future. So I will be in support of this.
Thank you, Commissioner Lukey. Further discussion, commissioners? Seeing no further discussion, we'll take a vote on this item. All those in favor of item 5B signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed say no. That item has passed, six to zero. Next, we'll move on to the general public input on non-agenda items. Is anybody here from the public tonight that would like to speak on a non-agenda item? Seeing nobody, we'll close the floor to public input. Any new business tonight, commissioners? No new business? I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourn?
Second.
The motion and a second. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed say no. We are adjourned.
The credits start to roll.
There you go. That would be fun. All right. Well, you guys have a happy holidays. I don't, I guess maybe I'll see you at Lincoln County, right?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so, we got.
[applause]